I'd like to call to order the public hearing of the Board of Education for Tuesday, September 27, 2022. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Schmitt?
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Here.
Mrs. Havikhorst? Mr. Bosch?
Here.
Six present.
Mrs. Havikhorst has a conflict she's going to try to get here later on. In the meantime, is there a nomination for Secretary for the evening?
I move that Broderick be the Secretary for the evening.
I second that. That was gonna be my nomination.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Secretary.
Thanks.
Okay, so we have a public hearing tonight. And we have the overview of the 2022-2023 budget.
Yes, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Gibson, our Chief School Business Official, to discuss fiscal year '22 results, but then also the fiscal year '23 budget, which we're here to vote on this evening. Dr. Gibson?
Thank you, Dr. McAllister. Good evening, everyone, school board members, and those in the community. This is our public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 school budget. And I want to start, although focusing out to the screen, we do have this posted publicly on the website, so if you follow our organization, you would like to get to the website and get that document. So first thing we just want to start with what Dr. McAllister said is the right 22 results. And basically, looking at this at a very high level, our operating revenues, which is operating means the funds that we operate in, that's education fund, the funding, transportation fund, working cash, where we have our savings, so to speak, from our referendum. So we have those operating revenues. And in the local revenue portion of that, there are primarily property taxes that run that. There's some local money from fees, cafeteria food service things, and also some donations that we'll talk about later, just a little bit. Replacement taxes is one thing I want to focus on. The official name used to be Corporate Personal Property Replacement Taxes. It's now shortened to Replacement Taxes, but also known as CPPRT, Corporate Personal Property Replacement Taxes. Those were, years ago, we would give those dollars, which were basically a tax on businesses. And those monies would flow into school districts and other taxing bodies. Those monies were taken away and reallocated against our wishes to some other organizations, but we've begun to start getting those back. So in this past year, we got those back in a bigger way than usual. We actually got an extra half million that isn't budgeted. So this year, we're budgeting an additional amount that we'll talk about later, but that certainly, hope to see that to be an ongoing situation. But it's one of the point that we did get more property, property replacement taxes. Seven hundred sixty-three dollars more that we had budgeted in terms of everything, the local revenues. In terms of our state revenues, the evidence-based funding, EBF, we received that money anticipated, but because there was a miscalculation of the State Board of Education's, State Board of Education's part to the original evidence-based funding formula, City of Chicago had gotten more money over about three years than they were supposed to get. So that was already allocated back, and school districts received their share. We see, we received about $350,000 extra last year for that, which was good. There's a lot to be said about that, but the state did correct that and money was taken back from Chicago. Our categorical grants, including transportation, special aid grants, and some food service grants, overall were less than projected, but the primary reason was that just the transportation budget revenue was a little too impressive. We didn't get as much in the revenues because we didn't have as much spending in the prior year due to not as much transportation with students not being in the schools in 2021. And federal grants were higher than projected overall, primarily due to ESIR grants, the COVID-related federal grants. But the thing about that, we still had operating revenues that were up from our budget by about 4.6 or 1.12 million. Again, most of that was from the Corporate Personal Property Replacement Taxes, Replacement Taxes, but also some additional property taxes as well. We usually say pretty conservative in our budget on that. We'd like to make sure we can still make capital in our reserves. We don't want to be surprised by not getting property taxes that we expected, so we can try to be conservative with that. So the overall, I'll come back to you see in a minute, it will be that it did help us out. So in terms of operating expenditures, the other side of our budget, so to speak, salaries and benefits, pretty much on target, just about 1.1%. Higher than the budget, about $224,000. Remaining expenditures, all the other categories, worked by about 2.7% total, or about $172,000. So our total expenditures, in the annual, were, again, total expenditures, total operating expenditures, were over by about 1.5%, or 3.95, 395,000. That's pretty close. If that were better, for it would be under, but to be over by only about 2%, is really not bad in terms of doing our best to guess where we're gonna be a year later. So the result of this, though, and we're talking budgeting in how we work against budget, but the overall effect is, you know, how many dollars are we gonna have to bank? What is the actual dollars that we spent compared to what we received? So we received $25.6 million in revenues for last year. We spent $26.9, so we had a net deficit, which we expect because we deficit spend and we use our referendum funds to fill in the deficit. We did some of that. So our, we put it in on the fund balance. Doesn't affect the revenues and expenditures. So our deficit pre-audit, because our audit duty should work on our audit in 2022, was $1.3 million. The good side of that, as was brought up at our finance committee meeting, by Mr. Zinnerman, was that we actually had a $2 billion deficit that was budgeted. So with these additional revenues that I pointed out, we're better off than we expected to be. And that's a result of, as we said back when we originally had the referendum in 2016 and before that, 2011, we try to manage our way through the year so that we can come out better than we expect. So we have an expectation that we have, there's a seven-year payback period, but then we try to manage the money that we have away that's gonna extend that time, make sure we get the seven years out of that. So as you'll see what we get into the budget, you'll see how the expectations are for extending those funds into the next couple of years. But again, in terms of last year, we're still in pretty good shape regarding our referendum funds and regarding our spending and our revenues. All right, looking at this year's budget. For 2023 fiscal year budget, starting with revenues, let's first look at what drives our budget. What is it that these revenues, where they're from? How they drive our budget? We've got property taxes I talked about. Then there's evidence-based funding we talked about, Tier One. There's four tiers. Top, the higher number means that you're in worse financial shapes, so to speak. You're relied by more of state funds, state, in case of the evidence-based funding. Mandatory categoricals, I mentioned those are the other grants from the state that we get, including transportation, as I mentioned before, especially transportation. Federal grants, and that includes a variety of Title I, those used to be in the old grants, now they're called ESSA, average student's exceeds act, ESSA, not SIR, which is the COVID grants, S-I-E-S-S-A. And then also some other grants related to, you know, some various needs that we qualify for. Some investment interest, activity book fees, those are all in the local funds. Probably gonna move this up a little bit. But we get some donations from different sources, especially from our parent organizations and somewhere else, looking forward to, to help the schools in doing the things that they do to educate our kids and provide other activities. And just, you know, even though we're really nearly in government, I mean, I'm not the governor or anyone who can tell us where we are or not with COVID, but in terms of how it's affecting our school districts, financially, it's less of an impact. We are not spending that much money for cleaning supplies and masks and all the things that we had to do. We're not having all the spacing and the plastic that's dividing everyone. So there's less of a need for revenues. However, because we are spending some money that we got from COVID funds and we're talking a minute, our SIR grant, E-S-S-E-R grant, it's gonna have an impact on our air quality because we're doing some, some, what we call it, IQ indoor air quality project work. And so that's gonna be helping us out, those revenues that we have from the SIR grant. But again, COVID to a lesser extent is having an impact. One of the things that we're dealing with, and all homeowners or taxpayers, I should say, property taxpayers are dealing with, is that the Cook County itself is late with getting property taxes out. Getting the property tax bills rather to people who pay taxes, and in essence, they're delaying property taxes that we have to run the school districts. So we don't have, basically, property values is what we rely on knowing. And, you know, we may estimate our calculation, but they're not gonna have this information out. They don't go to the weeds on it. But basically, we don't expect to get property taxes until late December or January. And so we do rely on those, as you saw in last year's operations, we rely on those operating. So I'll talk a little about what we're gonna mitigate that, but we have to do our best property tax estimate with the property value information. We don't have that, but we're still pretty good at estimating. So the property tax revenue that we estimate is going to be an increase of over last year, about 3.1% or $431,000. Well, it's about $50 million in taxes, but, you know, we don't want to get to the weeds on the numbers. But it's about $431,000 over last year that we're estimating, based on the non-having property value information. And also, we typically expect, and we have historically collected about 98, 99% of our property taxes. A couple of years ago, a few years ago, we had collected about 94%. And so that was about the lowest point we'd been, but now we're getting back up to collecting more and we're estimating again conservatively that we'll collect about 96% of the taxes that are extended by the county clerk's office on our behalf. In terms of evidence-based funding, again, we talked about that a little bit, but, you know, this year, this is gonna be, again, so I'll show you a chart of that in a little bit here, and that is going to be up by $900,000, which is, which is a good thing in terms of the state fulfilling their promise to have this new evidence-based funding, which replaced the general state aid to have it work on our behalf. So that's what we want to see, and that's heading in the right direction. Again, evidence-based funding, there's about the tiers, apparently 124, and those are based on an adequacy level. So without getting to the weeds on that, we used to be, last year, 64%, we're now at 65% adequacy. So that's one of the drivers of the amount of money that we get from evidence-based funding.
Dr. Gibson, I'll just add one thing for the board. So when evidence-based funding started five years ago, we were at 62% adequacy. So we are getting better, albeit at a very slow pace. So, so there's good news, but it's not nearly as good as we would like.
So it'll be about, what, 30 years for us to, okay, just one, just confirm, 30 years?
We're probably there.
Okay, just confirm.
So in terms of the chart that you mentioned, you can see this last part here, 2023, there's that $900,000 additional funding. So just kind of broke this chart out so that you can see what the base funding is, and then, in case you can see, it's $7,381,000, and the additional tier funding, and it's $900,000. And this is just a chart. We brought this up time and again just to show the trend in state funding, in terms of the general state aid. Up until here, 2018, up until 2017, began to have evidence-based funding, and then they would cap on the tier funding and hold your own, if you got last year, and we build on that. They made the state.
Can I make one comment, I guess? So I think one of the things that we talked about, excuse me, in FNP with regards to the evidence-based funding, correct me if I'm wrong, is usually we don't find out what our allocation will be for evidence-based funding until, like, very late. Like, we just found out what our allocation will be, like, within the last few weeks, and that's based upon whatever the formula the state puts, uses, and then that's when they figure out what their allocation is going to be, right? So that, so we usually don't find out until this timeframe every year, right? So October, I'm sorry, August, September timeframe, right? So we can't even plan on using, we can't even budget, we can't even use that for our projections, like, say, in June or July of a particular year. Is that, was that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, and since we're talking history here, too, it used to be much worse than that. There'd be times when the state wouldn't even have voted on it until, like, December or so. So having it in time to present it to you in the budget is actually an improvement, but it's still, in terms of our general budget and then having some planning, even as early as May or June, we don't have that. It never be able to optimal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bosch, I should say. Are going to expenditures for this current FY '23 budget. What drives our budget on the expenditure side? So salaries and benefits, big issue, we've talked about that time and again. They would simplify 80% of our expenditures, salaries and benefits, in the operated side. Student fees, as I mentioned, are primary, you know, primary what we do. So we obviously have budgeting for those. Agency facilities, program needs, agency facilities, you know, we've been talking about that as well. That's a big issue. It's also something we'll be talking about in the coming months. And then curriculum is always a big thing. I always, one of my last pieces of information in putting this together was a call to our curriculum director, Kathy Shafly, just to say, hey, you know, do a budget presentation. You got some stuff for me? What are we doing? What are we doing that's gonna be impacting kids directly? So talking about that, student fees, curriculum, agency facilities, program needs, as I mentioned, technology, I think, people constantly doing that. It was a big, big push during the start of COVID, when we started doing remote learning, so we had to really, really question, we can continue to do that. We'd always been working hard on technology and keeping things updated, working very closely with our technology director, Beth White, making sure we had a plan and a placement plan and just making sure resources were available. We work very closely on their budget every year, and she does a great job with that. Thanks, Beth. Again, COVID-19 on our expenditure side, so, because we're not spending a lot of money on the supplies, and not 100%, no, because we're doing the construction, again, with our unitments, which is a big project, and we also spent some COVID money on the infrastructure, the mechanical, the plumbing for the modular unit at the road. So there's still some spending, but that's, that's beginning to wane. We haven't seen new grants in terms of COVID come out yet, so less so. Terms of the, just going about the salaries, you tell me, we had a new contract, our new contract, a two-year agreement with our teachers and support staff. So just to be told of that is about a 6.1% increase, and that includes, you know, all salaries across the board. But by and large, there was a pretty good chunk of that that was for the new contract. I won't get into really any detail about that. But just, that does drive our budget in a big way. Benefits cost them, well, are higher, 6% higher. Interestingly, because, you know, we really had no increase in our insurance premiums, and that's been the case for many years, due to, I think, some very active work with our insurance committee, which is comprised of union members as well as administration. And they really worked hard to make the changes we felt necessary to keep our premiums flat most years, there was negatives, negative increases, and a few smaller increases, but the main thing would drive this, driving benefits cost them, is just that people are making choices that have different plans. Family plans are more than the single plans. The district pays more into that. There wasn't really a lot of impact with that, with our new contract. And I asked you to take a look at, we were thinking about, we have new provisions for, at least higher revenues for education, for continued education, folks who get to come out to get more degrees, and don't anticipate seeing a lot, you know, a huge driver, that'd be a huge driver of that. So anyway, salaries and benefits. In terms of the other expenditures, transportation costs, down from last year. The, it's interesting, we did have a significant increase in our rates. We did go out and bid, and still, we did get some decrease in our, the initial offer from the company, from Kicker, but the increase in rates was pretty significant. However, because there's a driver shortage, we can't get as many routes as we needed. We're running fewer routes, therefore, that obviously have backed, so it's decreasing our costs overall, that we expect to spend in 2023, 2023. And our building maintenance costs are increasing slightly. We're just trying to be more aware of, you know, doing work with the buildings. Again, we've got our, we've got our agency facilities, so we want to make sure that we are maintaining those. You know, we've got, I guess you could also include the construction work, this is really just a day-to-day maintenance that we're talking about. We're spending some money on some new equipment. Just one thing, a small thing, it's not really in this category, but it does go to maintenance costs. We're actually buying a, this is my official notification to you. We're buying a salt spreader, right? So we've got a salt spreader.
We're gonna slide that in.
In our, you know, full purpose here. We have a salt spreader that our guys would have to think bad by, you know, the pallet and load those into the spreader. So now what they're doing, it's a spreader that they're gonna take that thing and drive it to the village of Homewood. We've gotta deal with the village of Homewood, and they're gonna dump that salt in there from the machine that they use, and our guys can just drive back to us. So it's about $6,000. Okay, so anyway, just an example of what we're trying to do to improve the maintenance in our buildings. Again, this was some of what's come from a conversation with Kathy Shafly. So monies that we are spending this year are gonna be dealing with supplements for our students and inventory materials to help develop a COVID education gap for our students. They have, you know, there's plenty of laws, we've done some summer school to help mitigate some of that, but additionally, we just continually work to buy materials needed to help with that process of closing that gap. Materials for early readers, this is another part of that. And current events, basically, students keeping up with the current events, like we were doing in our, in our times, to have current events, like my sixth grade teacher used to say, "Current events." We have those for our students at a higher grade level. That was Ms. Thomas asking about that one day. So student devices, again, that's just a big thing that we have. We're always updating those, making sure that we've got current, current technology and also that rotation cycle to make sure our devices are working. Construction projects, just putting that up there again. It's something that we need. We've got one that's, you know, it seemed like a lot of money, $9 million, $9.2 million, but it's still a small piece of money for the work that we need to do in our buildings. Usually pushing around $1 million a year, first to have our students at outplace facilities where we cannot service them here. And then I wanted to mention, this is a little bit, I want to talk about this a little bit. So we typically transfer, as I said, before, money from our referendum funds, the working cash fund, to shore up the funds, you know, support our deficit. So what we're doing now, we're gonna transfer another $2 million of that, and we'll still have some balance left in that. But what we're also doing, we're gonna transfer, when we talked about this in our finance committee meeting, we're gonna have a $2.5 million transfer. So it's gonna be, I think, $2 million to, yeah, $2 million to the evidence-based fund and a half million to operate the maintenance. But in consultation with our financial advisor, who helped us with the bond issue for the construction of Elizabeth Hennessy, we thought we'd keep that, a half million of that, because the county has not got our property taxes to us. We have to now either borrow money to get us through this time until we get the property taxes, or if you happen to have some money in the working cash fund because you had a referendum a few years ago, you can manage that and to take care of what you needed to take care of. And we have enough to basically shore up our bond and interest fund. We've gotta pay a bond payment in December, everybody pretty much does when you have bonds. And if the taxes didn't come in, we've got a two-plus-million-dollar payment to make. So what we're gonna do is transfer $1.7 million that is going to go to, loan $1.7 million to the debt fund, so we can make sure that we can get the bond payments made. But that's gonna be given back to us.
I wanna just kind of reinforce some of the things you just said. One is that the referendum funds that we are using are from a previous referendum. They have nothing to do with the referendum that's on the ballot right now.
Correct.
And were we not to use money from that, we would have to borrow money and pay interest, and interest rates are up, because, so we would be spending more money just to pay our usual and customary bills, since the county has not sent out the tax bills and are sending them out very, very late. And the consequence to us is having to either borrow money and pay interest on it, using more of the taxpayers' money, or using money that we may have in a fund, borrowing from that fund. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the other side of that, too, is you're gonna have bond issuance costs or financing issuance costs, and you're gonna pay people to do the work, get them issued. The other side, too, I wanted to mention, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a risk here. I'm just gonna be real quick. I want to make this point on that same topic that Shelley just brought up. So one of the things that we had done a few years ago, we put this minimum fund balance line here just to indicate that we didn't want to go below this, this fund balance, our cushion that we need for certain things, events that might happen. Well, we haven't, that's happening right now. This county is not giving us our property taxes. If not for the board, you know, mandating that we maintain this fund balance, you know, if we were down here, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing. We'd have to borrow, we'd have to spend that extra money for borrowing. We'd be in a much worse situation than we are.
And the county is not going to reimburse districts for, right?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We're on the wrong with that. Okay, congratulations. Okay. So I just wanted to make that point, I think that was important for us to talk about. Thank you for your input, Shelley. Mrs. Marks? So just as a summary now, our 2023 final budget. Our operating revenues, $28.2 million against $30 million of operating expenses. So this year, we're expecting, anticipating that to be $1.3 million. So that's pretty much in line with what we, pretty close to what we had wanted to keep it at over the years, as we're spending down the referendum money. It's been, and now we have one year where we actually have a surplus. So our operating fund balance at the end of 2023 should be $6.1 million. Now, that's four different funds again, and one of those is the working cash fund that has the referendum funds. The one thing this says to us is just that if we, you know, with some good management of the money, we could, we should be able to make it through another year. You know, we're spending, you know, our deficit's probably, but we'll have enough for, through 2024. It's just important to know, so we can have some comfort that we can make sure we continue to educate our kids. But that's because we have been doing some management. We got lucky with some state, state funds, you know, are coming in. CPPRT is coming in, so those are things we didn't know back when we did, when we had the referendum back in 2016. So what we're doing is saying that we can still operate, but that's still gonna be depleted. We don't know what's coming down the pike. We do have, you know, higher, you know, higher salaries to pay, and, you know, there's other things that we don't know about yet that might come down. So, but just so we know, we're not broke, what we're getting here.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify, when we say deficit, you know, just note to self, I think it would be good if we put structural deficit versus just deficit. I think that's very important, that, and I've mentioned this before, there's a difference between a deficit and structural deficit, meaning it's deficiency on expected funding from state or federal level, any municipal government. And I would just say that, you know, just on note in regards to upcoming, you know, requests to the community, that they understand in regards to, which is good that you've shown it, that expenditures have gone up to be able to educate our kids, and the competitiveness. And study came out a few days ago, 53% of, you know, schools across the country have staffing shortages, right? So within that year, we could have issues in regards to our facilities. We could have replacement costs to staff in our buildings with quality teachers. And so I just want to be clear, especially from a public record, that we start to use the term structural deficit. Just having deficit may imply some things. And I want to make sure there's clear that, you know, the work that you've done and Dr. McAllister and the board before I got here, the fact that we've been able to squeeze and stretch from 2016, and I think that you're usually more conservative. I will just go and work and say, my gut is saying that, you know, we would be fortunate if we reached a year, considering the way this economy is, and our failing facilities, that we've, you know, done Herculean efforts to keep up. So I just wanted to give kudos, but just clarifying point, nothing that you did, structural deficit, I would just think that we just need to start seeing it a bit more often.
Yeah, I agree. And I know we did have those conversations before, when we were talking about the bond, when we were having reference, when it was in the past, and we had the bond issue, and we talked about all that. Didn't fix our all that, didn't fix our structural deficit. So, you're right, we did, we got away from that. And that is what this is about. The referendum that we have put on the ballot that, you know, we have to file paperwork on and everything, that is designed to fix a structural deficit. The bond issues that we've done in the past, the past two, since I've been here, those were not designed to fix a structural deficit. Right, absolutely. That is a great point. So, all they do is that.
And we'll be all caught up in 30 years in regards to evidence-based funding.
Can we go back to one slide, please? So, so one of the things that I think I see here, right, and just based upon everything that you've talked about, what you presented and what, and what we talked about with finance and property last week was, you know, that we've had, we've been fortunate, I guess, in some of the revenue streams that have materialized within the last two, like, three, four weeks or so, month, month and a half, give or take, I guess. Whereas, you know, six, eight weeks ago, we probably were in a much dire situation than we are today. Because I think, you know, as we've talked about, you know, we found out we're receiving another $900,000 in evidence-based funding. We didn't know that six, eight weeks ago. We also received the corporate, the CPPRT, right, which was, how much more was it, was it?
It was a half a million.
Okay, so it was about half a million dollars last year. So, I think between those two, you know, that was a $1.4 million in revenue that we were not anticipating six, eight weeks ago. So, I think because of that, right, so if we take away that 1.4, we really, you know, six, eight weeks ago, our operating funds, we were projecting somewhere in the neighborhood of four and a half to $4.7 million. So, I think we've been very fortunate, well, benefactor of some decisions that have been made outside of our control. So, I think because of some of those decisions that were made by other governmental agencies, we're looking a little better than what we had anticipated six, eight weeks ago. And so, I think that was the driver for a lot of the decisions the board has made the past couple of, last couple of months. So, I think the bottom line is we've been fortunate, but we cannot rely on those types of windfalls, I'm gonna use that word very loosely, from, from government agencies. So, so, so again, I think, you know, we're looking a lot better than we did six, eight weeks ago, just from a revenue standpoint. However, we still have a structural deficit, as Mr. Zinnerman has said, that we need to address through the referendum that's on the November 8th ballot. So, again, I think we're in a very fortunate position. Six, eight weeks ago, we were not looking the way we are today.
And regardless of all of that, the money from the working cash bonds that we sold in the last referendum, we planned on using all of that to meet our structural deficits, and we will indeed use all of it to meet our structural deficit. And when that money is gone, money from the referendum that is now on the ballot, we will begin receiving that money to use, to erase our structural deficit for the future. So, the timing is, is very fortuitous, but it does not change our need in any way, shape, or form. It just allows us to, to bridge the two opportunities where before we may not have been even able to do that.
Right. It's exactly right. I think also, I wanted to mention that of that 6.1 balance, that's 1.9 million of that is the remaining referendum funds. So, that's, that's not really, I know we're...
It's not that much. It's not that much.
We're using, maybe another year maybe. Okay, thank you very much for that. And actually, to that point as well that you just mentioned, I'm gonna do a quick flip on it before we... So, okay, so, this is the new graph, that's actually the same one that's posted on the website. I do wanna be transparent here. There's a number here, it's $60,000 less, more. If I were to have adjusted this for a budget, it'd be $60,000 more. That's not significant, so I didn't mean to change, just to make it clear. If anybody double checks my number, this is gonna be different than what's on my budget. It's a lot of work to put this together, and I didn't think I wanted to risk making a mistake and have to do everything over. But, looking at this number, keeping an eye on that 5.985, and this is last year's graph from the budget presentation, it's 5.99. This is what we projected last year. So, it's just to that point, you know, that's another $900,000, a million more than we thought last year because we didn't know, and the things that you said, the state has come through for various reasons. So, I think that just shows the point that that's very true, it's just things that we project them, try to understand what's gonna come up. But you can see the representation here and the difference between those two graphs. This is that same graph that we used back in the 2011 referendum and then the 2016 referendum. Obviously, we cut off the previous years, I was back in 2008. But here, in 2016, we had the referendum and then we, we issued the bonds, we had in two different years. So, one year was up and then the next year went up again because we had two different bond issues. Up $9 million, up four and a half, one year then four and a half the next. And then as we had planned, the money starts to bleed off, so to speak. I do wanna point out again, the shift to the other, what we expected before was a straight line, pretty much dropping down, right? But then we did have a year that, actually, we did have that one surplus that I mentioned, and then we continued to fall down to $6 million here, and then this is that 3.6 in 2024. That's just an estimated, estimated projection based on, you know, certain assumptions. So, this is the graph we always use, we make sure we keep it updated, and again, the same one is on our website, and you can get that in the review on this course. I think that I have a big piece of it. And again, it's that last year projection. So, our plan for the future, and, you know, really just looking at the school perspective, not really getting into the details that we were just talking about, but those are very, very important. Student staff and family safety continues, this is consistent with what we said last year, delivery of instruction, learning process will continue to improve that, again, looking at overcoming that COVID gap in learning, helping our kids to get caught up in state cover-up. Finances and facilities, finances are big now because of us having to make up the money that's not coming in on time. Facilities, again, we've got huge facility needs, we're fulfilling some of those now, but one of the things that we're doing to fulfill our needs is modular, temporary housing. So, you know, we really need to get more space in our schools, and we've also got the modulared Churchill that we'd love to replace with additional building space. District office retirements, this was a big thing before because Dr. McAllister was replacing Dr. Mitchell, but I guess it's, I guess it's right, we need to kind of mention that I'm gonna be retiring, so we've got another retirement in my position, and then next year, we've got our director of food services is gonna be retiring, that's another really important position because that person manages three people and who services three buildings, which is, in her opinion, and I agree with her, it's a part of the education process. It's part of our career goal that students have a great, great lunch. Leadership transition, again, both, and I have leadership roles, obviously mine is at the administrative level, so those are things that we'll be planning for. And then, maybe missing something, but I'm not really trying to be real thorough with this one. And then, another big thing I'll ask Dr. McAllister to speak on a little bit, if we plan our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative, EPI, something we are really stepping up on this year. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll just mention, we, we had talked about this last year when I first started, that this was going to be an important initiative for us, and certainly we have, we spent all last year planning, and this year, we had our second institute day to start the school year, where 120 of our staff participated in a full-day training, and very good feedback from that. And we do have another date planned for the spring, and then over the next two years after that. So, it's a, it's a three-year program with the first group, and you say, why only 120? That's what we were limited to, but we certainly look to continuing that important work. And of course, that carries an expense, not only in time, but also money. So, thank you. And I just wanna thank publicly Dr. Gibson, this is, this will be your final budget presentation before you are off to retirement. So, so thank you so much for everything that you have done, for the insight that you provided, and for the financial stewardship. I mean, it's not easy to be in a district such as ours where we are battling literally for the dollars that we get and how to best serve our kids in our community with limited resources, and you're a big part of that. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate that. I'm not gonna like that in June when you say that stuff. Although these two things...
Well, we still, we still have you, we still have you for, for eight months, so, yeah. Does anybody have any questions on the, on the presented budget?
Any questions from the board, from the audience? All right. Then, if there, thank you. If there are no questions, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, we have our regular meeting. Let me get to that agenda. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Homewood School District 153 for September 27, 2022. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Biffey?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Here.
Mrs. Havicore?
Here.
Mr. Bosch?
Here.
All present.
We have approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of August 15, 2022, and the closed session minutes of the Board of Education for fiscal year '22. Are there any additions or corrections to any of those sets of minutes?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have future dates.
Yeah, just a couple of days off coming up next week, Wednesday, October 5th is Yom Kippur, so students and staff will not be in session on that day. And then we come back for Thursday and Friday, and then we are off on Monday for Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, two days off, Wednesday of next week and the Monday of the following week after that. But otherwise, we are moving along here in trimester one.
Great, thank you. Any presentations tonight?
There are none.
Alrighty. Did anyone in the audience come to address the audience on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? All right. And I do not believe we have any, had any questions or concerns at the last meeting, so we don't have any responses. Any board members have any reports tonight?
Yes, we have a report from Educational Progress Committee. The Educational Progress Committee, we've met twice to update our policy manual. It's going very well. We had a lot of great input. One of the great things that I've noticed is that in our current policy, we already have a lot of things that we are required or recommended to have, and we're ahead of the game. So, we already have those things, and the things that we don't have, we're implementing those and getting those in the policy manual, and we'll have one more meeting to finalize the manual.
Great, thank you. I know that's a lot, a lot of tedious work for all of you, and it's very much appreciated. Any other board members have any?
Yes, so, as we mentioned previously, finance and property, we met last week to go over the, the final budget. That was the primary item, and I don't know, Ron or Deb, if either of you have anything else you wanna add to what we covered or anything about the meeting last week?
Pretty much everything from tonight.
Okay. And so, obviously, the final budget is, is on our agenda for, for the board's review and approval, hopefully.
Superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just wanna let you know, update on enrollment for this school year. You know, COVID had a, had an impact on our enrollment. We just didn't know exactly how much. We saw our numbers go down, of course, as more families opted to keep their children home. What we did not know was how many would come back. We anticipated most of them, and sure enough, that has come to fruition. So, actually, our numbers this year, over last school year, we have an increase of just 19 students. So, it's been pretty consistent. But our enrollment is up 19 students, we're right at 1860 students enrolled so far this year. And interestingly, Willow has seen the biggest increase. They've actually increased by 32 students in that building. The other two have actually decreased slightly. Churchill and James Hart are both down slightly, although this week, we've had several new students enroll at James Hart. But Willow is certainly the one that has seen the greatest influx of new students. When people ask me, what, what has been the biggest challenge for us? You know, certainly the last two school years, that answer was a, an unabashed COVID, right? Huge challenges for that. And that, I don't wanna say we're past COVID. As Dr. Gibson mentioned, we're not past it, it's still with us, we're still testing, we still have positive results coming back. But certainly, it is not dominating our conversation like it has in the past. What has me most concerned, what keeps, keeps me awake at night, is staffing. And I've, I've said this before, our profession is in a very dire situation. And we've heard of staffing shortages. Mr. Zinnerman, you, you read the same article I did, half of schools in America have staffing shortages. And I was shocked, to be quite honest, that it was only half, right? Because what's happened to us is when we have shortages in the past, and I say in the past, when I started here 10 years ago, we would get literally dozens, hundreds of applicants for open teaching positions. And now, it is unusual, I can think of one position we posted last year that we had double-digit applicants. One, and that was in music. And in the old days, you couldn't find music candidates. This year, we have started the school year and are still running our buildings without fully-staffed certified teachers. 100% out of necessity. It's not because of, that's what we want to do, we have searched, we are, we are now using third-party agents to go out and try to get candidates to fill our open positions, specifically special education and PE, if you can believe that. Because again, 30 years ago, physical education teachers were everywhere. They were everywhere. And we could have our pick of the litter, and now we are looking for applicants. So, I don't know what this, what this says for the future, right? I'm most concerned about right now. And I bring this up because of the impact I feel that it has on our current staff. Because when I, when I look at what is causing them anxiety and challenges, it is the constant coverage that they need to provide throughout our buildings because we don't have enough teachers, we don't have enough substitute teachers, we don't have enough assistance. So, if there are people in our community who are watching, who are interested in a career in education, as somebody who is in year 31, I can tell you, it is incredibly rewarding work, and we need more people to enter the profession. There's nothing more rewarding than working with kids. I mean that, and I know several of you seated at this table, that's what you do as well. So, we have a crisis in education, and our district is starting to see that. So, whatever we can do to recruit and keep the best people we can, I'm gonna continue to do that. That's, that is a huge priority for, for us. So, I just wanted to, to say that that has hit home. It's hit home with us in a very real way. But other than that, this year has a very good feel to it. You know, it's nice to be in the buildings again, and a great majority of students and staff are, are no longer wearing masks, they're certainly welcome to if they want, but to see faces is huge. To be able to see smiles is huge, and make connections with people because we can see them. So, this year has a, has a good feel to it. Still concerns, but compared to where we were 52 weeks ago, I feel great. So, I just wanted to share that with all of you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have a need for an executive session to discuss student residency and the superintendent's evaluation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mark?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havicore?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch? Yes.
Seven ayes, motion carries. We will return eventually.
Hey, Tim, you're responsible for him, you know that, right?
I'm trying over, thanks, right?
We have returned from executive session. And we have several consent agenda items tonight. The first is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for October 2022. Are there any questions?
No.
Is there a motion? Uh, never mind. We have the personnel report.
Yeah, in your board packets, you can see numerous items there for leaves, resignations, and people that we've hired, as well as some reassigned staff.
Any questions on the personnel report?
No.
We have recognition of the sixth-day enrollment numbers.
I did share that during my superintendent's report, but there you can see the breakdown by grade level and building.
We have approval of the administrator and teacher compensation report.
One of the requirements by law is that each district post salary and benefit information for administrative staff as well as teaching staff. In the past, we've done these in two separate documents, many school districts post them as one unified document, which is what we're doing now this year. So, the document that you see in your packet is the salary and benefit report for all certified staff.
And, any questions on that?
No.
Okay, we have approval of tuition and salary adjustments.
One of the things that we're excited about is when staff continue to improve themselves educationally and take new classes, which obviously helps them and helps their kids, it also results in tuition adjustment for them. So, what you have, the packet is a nice summary of everyone who was able to take coursework last year and possibly improve on salary.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Okay, we have approval of additional sponsor for existing Girl Power Club.
Yeah, right now, the contract calls for one stipend, and we are asking for a second, simply because there's a lot of interest in the club, which is a great thing.
Good deal. Any questions?
No.
All right, we have a recommendation for change orders.
One of the things with our ongoing construction is a couple, you know, work that we intended when the architects drew it up sometimes does need to change, and a couple of things that came up, which have already been paid for, because there's a contingency built into the overall money that we borrowed, but they got into the Willow boiler room and realized that the concrete pads that the boilers sat on were crumbling, literally falling apart, so we weren't going to put new boilers on top of crumbled concrete, so we have to pay to replace those pads, and there's pictures, actually, in the packet that you can see of the new work. And then also, the modular unit that went, we had to put plumbing and electrical out to that modular unit at Willow, which required tearing up the asphalt and the concrete, so we had to patch that. And so, the two change orders, again, no increase in cost because it's part of the contingency, but you can see the details there.
Any questions on the change orders?
No.
All right, we have approval of the consent agenda. Any questions from the board or the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in I am 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, 7E, 7F, and 7G.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have the second payment of August 2022 bills and the first payment of September 2022 bills. Any questions on the bills?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official at the Board of Education authorize the second payment of August 2022 bills and the first payment of September 2022 bills in an amount not to exceed $3,379,448.89.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have disenrollment of student 23492. Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the hearing officer's report dated September 20, 2022, that a child was fraudulently enrolled in District 153, and this child is to be disenrolled effective September 28, 2022, the parents' guardians will be billed the per diem rate for the days of the student was enrolled.
Second.
Any questions from the board, from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have adoption of the fiscal year 23 budget. Are there any questions on the budget that were not answered previously? From the board? From the audience? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Finance and Property Committee and the Chief School Business Official that the Board of Education approve the budget for the 2022-2023 school year as presented or modified if budget line items are changed at the public hearing or the regular meeting, and adopt the resolution declaring the budget of the 2022-2023 fiscal year as attached.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have mid-year teacher resignation.
Yeah, I'll just provide a little clarity. So, Illinois School Code 2414 provides that a teacher who resigns after the start of the school year is subject to license suspension per the Illinois State Superintendent. And one of the challenges that I talked about earlier was the effect that, well, the staffing problems that we're facing now are severe. Anytime we have a last minute, or in this case, a resignation after the start of the school year, it is, I don't want to say virtually impossible, but to this point, it has been impossible to find a replacement for that person. So, I recommend that we follow the provisions outlined in the Illinois School Code and move to not accept the resignation of the teacher described here.
Any questions from the board?
No.
From the audience? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education not accept the resignation of LaShawn Beckleg, fourth-grade teacher at Churchill School as per Section 2414 of the School Code 105, ILCS 524-14, which prohibits a teacher from resigning during a school term to accept another teaching assignment.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have approval of the resolution for the adoption of the Teacher Retirement System Supplemental Plan.
One of the things in your packet, the state of Illinois is now requiring that all schools adopt basically a supplementary savings plan. The details are outlined there, the plan details, but this is a requirement. New employees are opted into the program unless they choose to be opted out, but essentially, Tier 2 TRS members now will have additional savings pulled out of their check unless they choose to not do that. So, this is our formal resolution to adopt the plan as required.
Is there any questions? From the audience? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Chief School Business Official that the Board approve the resolution for the required adoption of the Illinois Teacher Retirement System Supplemental Plan.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion is approved. We have approval of a fund transfer resolution.
During Dr. Gibson's presentation, he talked about transferring money from the Working Cash Fund into the Ed Fund and the O&amp;M Fund, so the next two resolutions here, one for a million dollars, one for $500,000, into those respective funds.
Any questions from the board?
Uh-uh.
Or the audience? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Chief School Business Official that the Board of Education approve the resolution for the transfer of funds from the Working Cash Fund to the Education Fund in the amount of $1 million as attached.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have a second resolution.
Moved upon the recommendation of the Chief School Business Official that the Board of Education approve the resolution for the transfer of funds from the Working Cash Fund to the Operation and Maintenance Fund in the amount of $500,000 as attached.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have approval of a resolution authorizing loan to debt service.
Again, as Dr. Gibson mentioned, due to the late Cook County taxes, we need to be able to provide for a bond and interest payment in December, so we are loaning money from the Working Cash Fund into our debt service fund so we can make those payments on time, and then that money will be reimbursed upon receipt of our taxes, albeit late.
Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Chief School Business Official that the Board approve the resolution for the loaning of funds from the Working Cash Fund to the Debt Service Fund in an amount of $1.7 million as attached.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have approval of modular unit wiring installation by McWilliams Electric.
Yes, the new mobile unit at Willow School must have fire equipment that operates, and so Beth White, our Director of Technology, and Kevin Keen, O&amp;M Director, work with our contractors to get that wiring done so that the mobile was ready for occupancy on the first day of school. That cost is comparable to what we paid four years ago when the mobile unit was installed at Churchill School.
Any questions?
No.
From the board? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Chief School Business Official that the Board approve the purchase of services from McWilliams Electric for the installation of the wiring for fire alarm and intercom equipment at the cost of $76,800.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have employment.
We are constantly looking for people to fill our open positions, and we were fortunate to find three assistants, Jocelyn Newton Spence at Willow School, Matthew Neeland at James Hart, and Julia Glome at James Hart. I'll also point out to the board, our recent contract, which Dr. Gibson talked about, did provide for nice raises to our ESPs specifically, and so, some of the salaries that you see here, I think are indicative of the fact that we're going to be able to attract more people into our assistant positions, certainly compared to the pay that we were offering prior to the contract, so thank you for that support.
Any questions?
No.
From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Jocelyn Newton Spence effective August 31, 2022, Matthew Neeland effective approximately October 3, 2022, and Julia Glome effective approximately October 11, 2022, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than October 15, 2022, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Havocor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.